Welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District Board of Ed Meeting, August 22nd of 2019. Can I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss the employment of particular persons in collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. We are now in the executive session. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting for August 22nd, 2019. Could we all please stand for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
There is one agenda modification. We will be removing N22, the vendor train. And so can I have a motion to amend the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. And I now have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Did you pull the agenda item?
Yes. Freshman orientation is on Tuesday, August 27th. Wednesday, September 4th, school opens for all grades. Check your school for times. And Thursday, September 12th, will be the next regular Board of Ed meeting here at the district office at 7:00. And we have pride.
Yeah, I, to get it in, it might not make it in the next newsletter, but someplace, but I had the privilege, and Doug joined me, to give the class of 1959 a tour for their 60th high school reunion. It was, it was just wonderful. They were so excited, so happy, so just thrilled to be at their old high school again.
And they remembered.
So much.
I think back to my high school, I never remember that, I don't think. The detail that most of them knew, I was like a sponge. I did tell them, well, they were Pikers, because I was class of 58, so, you know, but other than that.
And they told me one fun little, you know, bad boy story. And that was, at one point, they had taken so-and-so's Volkswagen Beetle and put it up on the porch of Havlin Middle School as a prank. And I just thought that was adorable. So like, you could just picture it, you know. So we had, you know, we finished our summer schools, we had camp invention at Netherwood. We have a bunch of training going on and curriculum writing, so it's been very, very busy. I want to thank Jeff for stopping in at our administrators retreat. It was very much appreciated that you stopped in. It meant a lot. And I don't know, I think other people might have stuff.
Any other? Nope. Superintendent's report?
I don't think I have anything. Oh, yeah, just that the test scores were released today, the most recent test scores. Aviv is already crunching numbers, so, but that will all be included in her annual report this, early this fall. And, but they are released and public data right now.
Capitol?
What's that? Yes. And so, thank you, RTI. Also, for superintendent's report, we wanted to give an update on the Capitol Project, primarily what's going on at North Park. So we've got Elliot Sheldon, our Director of Facilities. We've got Lou from the Plumbow Group and Zach from CSR, just to give us an update on where we are.
So I'll speak quickly to the well. This Wednesday, we have the Department of Health on site. They gave us the okay to start pushing water into the building. They're coming back one week from Wednesday, so next Wednesday, they'll be there to give us the final blessing to operate. So the well is operational. We just have to get some bacteria samples to come back from the labs negative and do a couple of pressure tests and some paperwork for them. But other than that, the water should be operational by, 100% operational, and the people should be able to drink it by next Wednesday.
Very good.
Then I'll let you speak to the Capitol Project.
Oh, Elliot, can I remind everybody it was North Park, it's the well?
North Park's well.
Yes.
Correct. Yep. You'll see the nice new little building that you see right in front of you when you pull it. We check it out when we do the walkthroughs if anybody wants.
Hey, guys. How are you? Stuff. I'm still standing. Summer's going really well. So we're just briefly going to talk about the four contracts that you have in place right now for North Park. We're on Construction Group, was in place this summer, really primarily to put in soffit work that's going to be happening for all of the new duct work that needs to go in. So that happened in all the classrooms, in the art room and the library room. I walked through today, had some nice talks with some of the elementary school teachers that were really excited to be back, asking a lot of questions, so that was good. But they're all happy. The ceilings are back in place, so everything looks good. Pretty happy about that. The mechanical contractor, Southeast, right now is going through cement process, in particular shop drawing process for the duct work. They're going to be working second shift throughout the year. And right now, we're just looking, you know, to verify hits and whatnot. And what's nice about the soffit that we put in place, instead of a hard, the contract documents called for a hard lid, we actually have, now it's a reflected ceiling, just like you have here, so they can get in there and do the work and close up at the end of the night. So that's going to work really well during the year, and it looks good. Southside Contracting is your electrician, same thing. Cemental and approval process, he really doesn't have a lot of work going on right now. He's going to have some additional lighting work that we've requested, but other than that, he's, he's in a good position. And then ATAC is your hazmat contractor, and all of his work's going to occur next year. So really, there was no abatement work to occur now. And, you know, really, just looking forward, Zach will talk about what's happening with the planning, but, you know, we're just, you know, getting structured for the next bid, which is a big bid, and really looking at how we're going to structure the contracts and how we're going to phase the project, because there's probably three or four different ways to do it. So the team's just got to finalize that in the next four weeks. And I'll let Zach talk about the review of the existing facilities.
Great. Thanks, Lou. Yeah, things went well this summer, and Elliot secured the cleaning services of LCS just to, not that anybody was messy, but just to do an extra, extra pass-through of North Park, you know, from the construction this summer.
I thought the teachers, I mean, they were all generally, you're not going to make them all happy, but they're, generally speaking, they're, they're pretty happy. They were, yeah. There were a couple chirpers, but, you know, they were pretty good this morning.
Well, you can't fix things without shaking things up. I mean, you know, it's, what do they call it, a temporary inconvenience for long-term improvement?
I mean, I'm going to stay up here, just in case there's any questions at the end.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, just have a quick update on the SED review process for Havlin and FDR. Earlier in the year, we decided that we were going to put it in the normal queue, I think that was in February, and then around June, we were going to get in line at the third-party review. About a week before, we were going to make that switch to the third-party review, we actually got a note from SED saying that they had picked it up, kind of to our surprise a little bit. Their review time with the third-party reviews and some administration changes has come down from 40 weeks to two to four now for an engineering review. So we got their comments, everything's been addressed, and about two weeks ago, we got official approval for, for the two buildings, which is good for this project, because we don't have to pay that third-party fee, which we would have had to otherwise. So, yep. Lou said, we're just going to move forward and get the phasing out there and see, you know, little new constructibility things and be on our way, so.
And when do you anticipate bids for any of the?
For?
For FDR and Havlin? Like, so what, what happens between now and bidding for?
For those two? Well, I think the original schedule, I think we're going to go to bid with, you know, the original date was November, December this year. So like Lou said, just, you know, making sure all the constructibilities worked out, phasing, plans, things like that, and that's what we'll be working on together between now and then.
Great. Perfect.
Just one question with the second shift work. Is that going to affect any after-school programs that may go on in the building?
So as always, what we try to do is work around your activities. We will be looking to potentially be doing some work in the tunnels, also in the ceilings. So we'll look to see where you're actually doing your activities and keep contractor functions separated. But the way the contract was written, we, we did say we were going to be allowing them to do second shift work throughout the year, to make sure we were going to get things done, so.
Do we expect that's going to put any extra burden on our custodial staff? I mean, just thinking, you know, if they're typically in there running, you know, cleaning building, you know, cleaning classrooms, and you're going to have construction in classrooms, you know, I can, I can envision a contractor walking out at, you know, 10:00, and at that point, they've got a limited amount of time, do you?
The way we wrote the scope of work was the same way we wrote the scope of work over at Havlin. We did everything there, second shift, and the guys were to close up ceilings, because everything, all the work was done above the ceilings. So they were to close up an hour before they were ready to be done, clean up, and pretty much act as if they weren't there. So we're really following the same process that we did at Havlin. And I, I think Elliot, you were involved in it, and it worked, it worked fairly well as we moved through. And what we did there in particular, as we were moving from classroom to classroom, we gave Elliot a heads-up. Hey, by the way, we're going to be in room 301 through 303, and we're going to be down this part of the corridor. So this way, you knew where we were. We weren't all over the place. We kept everybody focused.
Okay.
And there were activities in the building as well that we, that we kept around. So it's, as long as we follow suit, I think we're going to be pretty good.
Okay, and I'll double-check what Lynette about. We do have an after-school program that's not ours, but another agency runs, so I'll check with that.
Yeah, and I would just point out too, just to, again, just to keep in touch with Lynette, because what I'm anticipating would, could possibly be going on in there are the PTA meetings that happen in the evenings, you know, the Girl Scout meetings. I know that there was, at one point, the CYO basketball used, I don't know if they still do, stuff like that. That's what I'm, that's what's running through my head.
Yeah, so we're going to include Lynette in all the job meetings, and we're going to have them on-site. So she'll know where we're going in, in the building and when. We're going to try to isolate work wing by wing, and then even sides of hallways and classroom by classroom. So we give the staff, you know, hey, we're going to be in the K-2 wing this week. Earlier in the week, we'll be on the right-hand side of the hallway, or the, you know, the northeast, southwest, however. We're giving classroom numbers, so they know. And we don't anticipate that the, they won't be able to have after-school activities, because the majority of the work is in the classrooms, and the after-school programs is either in the library, the music room, gymnasium, or cafeteria, which shouldn't ever be impacted, or if we need to be in that space, they could be in a different space.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions?
Sitting together? I know.
Thank you.
It's not easy.
Can I leave? All right, great. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Lou. Thanks, Zach. Safe trip.
Next, 7.2, the athletic department update, Schedule Galaxy and NFHS, Newburgh High School? No?
National Federation of High Schools.
Yeah, high school. School broadcast program.
Yeah, we're really excited. Two new, two new state-of-the-art programs coming up.
The metal?
Sides.
Oh, the side. Here we go.
Might be all.
Yeah, we should have done this beforehand. There we go. There we go. All right. Yeah, obviously, our mission statement is stated. Everybody should know that, right?
Do you want to do a test?
I challenge the, I challenge the, do you know our mission statement?
I didn't give the test, though, you know, I didn't have anybody raise their hand to say it. All right, so last spring, we had two gentlemen come down. One is a former athletic director, and one is a former, I think superintendent.
Superintendent.
They started this system a few years ago, a few years ago, called Schedule Galaxy. So they came in and met with me, and Rick Wirt popped in on the conversation as well, obviously, because it is technology. And they proposed, because I'd been thinking about how ways that we, like it says up here, how we can streamline everything into one area. As before, as we would have, we'd have three or four different types of schedules, coaches have four different Google documents, so I wanted to funnel that all into one system. And when they presented this, obviously, it pretty much fits our needs. So what it does is it provides a quick public access to the team's schedules. There is an app, okay? You can receive email alerts and notifications through an app. Another feature to it is parents can go on there for their child's particular sport, and on it will have the location, and it actually gives you directions to the location, and there's a map pointing to the specific area where it will be. You can also, like I said, there's schedule, you know, the scheduling's on there, the directions. Any changes that take place for parents, they can sign on. What I did is I gave each of you a handout here that explains the whole process of what, what I'm going to be handing out to the parents that explains it. So again, the improvement of communication, this was also presented to the coaches. So right now, we are in the very beginning stages of this. We just implemented it this summer. Coaches were introduced to it last week at the coaches' meeting. It was, each coach received, received an email from me to sign on, so there's a whole sign-on process, and they can input their own games, and they'll know when games will be changing, if we happen to make changes. So again, what I'm shooting for is definitely an improvement in our communication, not just amongst our staff, but amongst the community as well, so anybody can go. It's currently on our website. It's on the FDR Athletics website and the Havlin website. So when parents go on there, they can check to see, there's a whole, I don't know if I can click on that link or not, but I can't, right?
I don't know.
I don't know, but.
Yeah, that's fine.
I can kind of explain what it looks like, if you want to see that. If not, you can play with it on your own. But basically, parents can go to the, to the site, and they can pick the sport that their child does, and it breaks down, because when you first see it, if you go onto the website, you'll see it's, there's a lot of information there. So now you can, up at the top-hand corner, you can filter your activities to fit the needs of what, you know, what you want to look for. So example, if you have a child that plays JV boy soccer, they can go up, just click on JV boy soccer, they can click practice schedule and game schedule, and then what'll show up is just that particular schedule for them to look at. We did have our game schedules online, but now the, the practice schedules being there, I think is going to improve, just, you know, because some parents at the last minute may not know when practices are, you know, obviously, if you have teenagers, sometimes the communication isn't all there like it should be. So again, it's, I think it's going to be a helpful tool. It's also going to streamline rosters. It's just, I'm really looking forward, you know, as we keep working with it, I think it's, it's just going to improve our, our communication.
Question on that link. I did click on the link when I was looking earlier. You have to then, if you click on that link, you have to then identify Hyde Park.
Right. Oh, yeah, you know what? If I can.
Go for it. Click it. Use the mouse, though, not the.
So I guess the question is, if it's, if, if the link is on our website, would it then take its, you know, would it save us that step? Okay. That would be.
You have to turn that off.
Technology.
Yeah, here we go. All right.
Oh, you're already in there. Oh, they're already in there.
All right. But I've done that way. So I just clicked on the link. Like you said, if, if we went to our website, well, this is the link that you'd see in general, and you can, you know, people can go to, but I think I can get to the website from here, right?
There's a schools dropdown right there you could have went to.
Oh, yeah? Where at?
In the white line. It's the second one from the right.
Hyde Park's not there.
Right here?
It is there.
No, Hyde Park's not on that.
I found it. I found all our practices.
When I looked.
That's right. Top?
Yeah.
Down, down, down.
Under the blue letters. Oh, this, yeah. I got you.
Go to the right.
To the right. Schools. So now, as you can see, there are, I know, I just wanted to show, there are many schools that are using this system, most of whom are up Albany area, Syracuse area. We do have about seven or eight schools that are in the area. Wapengers went to this system last year. Before we decided to.
I didn't scroll.
Move forward with it, we did see that, I did speak to the Wapengers athletic directors, there's two of them down there, and I wanted to ask them about it, and they had very, just said it, it's an unbelievable system, and they're two people that I've known for a long time. So like I said, on the website, this would come up as the calendar like this, and everybody, you'd be like, wow, that's a lot of information. So like I said, you can filter it to, let's, we have, I like to use soccer, because I know we have that in season, and we'll do varsity, because that coach has done a nice job filling everything out. So then we can filter it. So now the practice schedule's up. Now, the blue, you see different colors. Blue means home. This color here, if you can help me out, I don't know if it's a pink or a red, is away. Okay? So like I said, it's just going to be easier for, for parents and even students to do this. And then the app, again, they can get information, once they get on the app, they can sign on particular, and they'll get the information for their particular sport or sports that their child is in. So that's, you know, like I said, we're playing around with a lot of things right now, but there's a lot of things we can work on, but this was the main one we wanted to get going for August. And I, part of me getting this out to them, to the parents, is I'm going to attend the parent-coach's meetings real quick. I said I wanted about five or 10 minutes, just to kind of introduce it like I did here real quick. Just give a quick intro, hand, give them these handouts, and go from there.
Is there cost for this?
There was. It was, we did it through technology. It was about $1,400 for the year.
And then that's a great, a great, a great.
And it's through, it's a, it's a, it's a coaster, yes. Yep. I want to make sure I said that correct.
Yeah.
Any questions on that?
No, I think this is great. One central location. This is really good.
Yeah, like, it's, and it's just easier for everybody.
I think the directions are particularly good, too, being able, that would have really come in handy when I was trying to follow around the cross-country team.
Oh, God, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Good? Good? All right.
Right?
Okay, now, the next thing is, is the contract for the National Federation of High Schools. So back in, this is again in the spring, the National Federation of High Schools had a representative come and speak to the athletic directors in our section, in Section 9, and presented this information of how to televise, or it's, National Federation has the capability to televise athletic events. Where they started is that all the state championships are, are televised by the National Federation of High Schools. So now it's filtering down to high schools, where they're going to look to install cameras that don't require anybody moving them, they're pixelat cameras, in the main stadium, in our FDR Stadium, and in the gym, in the FDR Gym. So some background information on that is there's no charge to the district for the use of the cameras. It's the responsibility of us to install the cameras. Again, I did speak with Rick about this, Rick Wirt, so he is aware of, of what this entails. And as you know, our press box has capabilities that we haven't really used to the full potential yet, so this would be one of them, where it doesn't require much for us to hook this up, because it, our, our press box is currently, you know, for any type of internet use, is probably one of the better ones in the area. And we have had National Federation here filming section final games, because we've hosted section, soccer section finals and lacrosse, so they've been here before, and it's been a real easy transition for them to, to film things. Just a little background on, on the pixelat, it was founded in 2013. Again, it was an international company to create unmanned video technology equipment that uses algorithms to automatically produce and broadcast. It's also in association with Play On Sports, so the National Federation of High Schools and Play On Sports and Pixelat are all involved in, in this system. So like I said, the cameras are installed at midfield or at midcourt, and are high enough to create a proper angle and distance. The only other requirements is the internet connection, as I said, the one thing we may have to do, and what we have done before for events, is, is install internet in the, in the FDR Gym. So again, as you can see, the setup doesn't take long. One of the things that does come with this is revenue sharing. It does not begin until year four. So in order for you to watch this, say, you know, a lot, the way it was sold to us is, say, we have parents that can't make them, make a competition, or they have grandparents that can't make it, or any type of relative, which, you know, I tend to agree with, is this gives them the capability to watch their, to watch their child, or their grandson or granddaughter, participate in an event. And the cost is, if you want an annual pass, let's say you have a, a son or daughter who plays three sports, and they're within that stadium field or the, or in the gym, it might, wise idea would go with the annual pass. I personally use the monthly pass for state championships, because I like to watch state championships in the state, and you can go on and you can watch through the National Federation. So again, you can, if you wanted to do it for a month, you can just sign on for a month, and at the end of the month, you can cancel it.
Excuse me. So, so that's unlimited viewing for any school that participates in this?
Yep. You can, once, you can go on, once you get the pass from the Federation, you can actually watch things throughout the United States. It's all over. There's many things on there.
So you mentioned the stadium and the basket, is that the only?
As of right now, those are the ones that we get at no charge. So if we, so I picture this year as a, kind of a trial year, right? See how it goes, see how everything works out. Then if we wanted to, to film baseball or softball, it would be a price, it'd be about $2,500 per camera. But right now, this is what they're giving us, are the two cameras and the locations for, at no charge.
How much for 2,500?
It's about 2,500, yeah. It's written in the contract, too. It's about 2,500.
And Tom, the other schools in the area, there are a couple of schools in our area that are. that have already started, Rhinebeck, right?
Yeah, I got it right here, actually. Sure, sorry. So, in our league, as of right now that I know of, is Marlborough, Sargades, Rhinebeck, Highland, and Dover. And there are a few others, but I haven't gotten confirmation on them. But within the MHAL, it's, we're probably going to have over half of the schools participating in this program.
Linda, this would be a question for you. Do we have a procurement issue here? I mean, where someone is making money off from us?
We've had this issue come up before. Like, we have the vendors that sell athletic gear, and we get a share of it, and they keep the rest of the money. I don't think that, I would have to look into it more.
I mean, I'm just thinking, what if somebody comes up tomorrow and says, hey, I got the same deal, you know, I want to give you the same deal? What, you know, do we have some obligation to vet this out in a way, or to solicit competition so it's not, you know, it's not a monopoly?
Yeah, I think it depends on how much we're actually receiving from it. I know when we did look into the vendors that make commission off the sales of the athletic clothing, the amount that they were actually making was minimal, so it wasn't an issue for us at that time.
This just, to me, seems like it has a potential for much greater revenue producing.
Yeah, I don't, I would have to look into it more.
Yeah.
With our attorney.
Yeah. That'd be the one thing that I would look at.
So, Tom, are these cameras stationary?
Yes.
No operator needed?
Free choice.
Yeah. I mean, some of the questions, was it Beebe or Fifi?
Kiki.
Kiki. She, you know, certainly went to the league, she went to the, she came to a superintendent's meeting. Some of the questions we asked were about privacy and things like that, and, you know, all of our questions were answered. So I think we should ask, but I'm sure it must have come up in the league, too, something about that, but we can check.
So any athletes would have to sign off on it being videotaped?
No. What we learned was by virtue of agreeing to participate in a sport that is open to the public, you can't, yeah, you can't say, don't film me if you have agreed to be on the team, because anyone from the public can watch any game at any time. Or film and broadcast. Or film and broadcast, yeah.
And I was informed from the, from Kiki, the representative for the National Federation of High Schools, that this has been, this particular contract is the same for each of the schools that I've mentioned. This was, so I wrote all the attorney, I guess there was one attorney, and most of the schools in Ulster County maybe had the same attorney. So, they went through it all. Because originally, Ulster County was against, you know, having this, because I don't know why. But then, once the attorneys came in and talked to the superintendents and they figured out a contract, this is what they went with.
And the cameras stay outside 24/7?
Yep.
Are they accessible for vandalism, or?
Well, they're going to be high enough, you know, anything that we put outside is, I mean, anything is accessible as far as, you know, if somebody wants to get to it, they'll get to it.
Well, not if it's inside.
Oh, inside, it'll be high enough, it'll be high enough. Right. In the gym, it'll be high enough.
At the building.
Yeah.
The only thing I would say is if we could look at coverage for all sports. I just don't, I mean, I don't like it where we're only doing a couple, and I think it'd be $7,500 to cover tennis, baseball, and softball, right? That'd be your only exposure?
The way that it can work, and I know Rhinebeck does this, is that's when we would have to have somebody film or be there to use, like Rhinebeck uses an iPad and has somebody film it and is able to get, to do it through the Federation. So there is, there is an opportunity to do it. We would just have to have that particular camera manned.
Until we buy a camera.
Right, exactly. So, that piece, you know, that's easy for me to learn about because Rhinebeck obviously is right here, and he's talked to us about it before. And he said it's not that difficult, it's just a matter of getting someone to do that. Now, do we have the capabilities? Have I spoken to our FDR Live people yet? No. But maybe that's something we can, you know, I can go and present and say, hey, look, we have this opportunity. Especially in the spring, I think in the spring is when we're going to have an issue because most of our varsity, all, pretty much all of our varsity events in the fall, except tennis, would be filmed. That's varsity.
Right.
Again, I think the purpose, I know the purpose is to offer parents, family members, the opportunity to watch your child play if they're unable to attend. Obviously, with some of the schools being in our league, involved in it, they can also maybe, you know, if they can't get to the away game, and the away team is part of this package, they can watch that as well. You know, one of the things that comes along with this is how do we promote this and talk about it? You know, coaches will be informed. I didn't do that yet because I wanted to make sure that, you know, I got done with this presentation first. You know, again, follow the same procedures I'm going to do with Schedule Galaxy, introduce it at the parent meetings, and, you know, and I'll distribute the information there as well as I'm going to do with Schedule Galaxy. I think that's all I had. Yep?
Okay. Thank you, Tom.
Great work, Tom. Pushing us, moving us into that, connecting to our globally connected world and racing. No, no, seriously, these are, these are steps forward that help us connect with kids and families and just, it's really, it's outstanding. So thank you.
My mind's racing about how we can work this into curriculum and starting a new media curriculum going on for our students, so that's where my head's going.
Oh, okay. We could get our kids to write a better program, put these people out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm thinking film it.
So next up is the 2019-2020 guidance plan.
Boom to grandparents and uncles and aunts that live in another state, the one on the internet.
Is he mumbling now?
Thank you. So, as you all know, we have a lot of new regulations and guidance. So the guidance plan has been adopted by the board the last several years, but it's really different this year. So we felt it was worthy of a presentation to, first of all, just talk about the changes that are happening and also let you look at the plan. And I want to thank, some board members looked at it really carefully, found a couple of things, so you have the, hopefully, perfectly revised edition now for the public. So again, this is, the regulations are Part 100.2-J, and I just went over the major changes. So, college and career does need to be a part of kindergarten through fifth grade. The core curriculum instruction has to be provided by certified school counselors, and so there's more information about that. On college career, social and emotional development, and academic skills development, these are the three areas. It also follows the ASCA standards of School Counselor Association, and those are really the best practices that we've been following and training counselors on for the last several years. So the state has really adopted these regulations now. So, one of the key pieces here, and the state went really back and forth for a while about elementary guidance counselors, and that's not the direction most districts went, especially who had social workers and psychologists. In my presentation that I did in June, and you know, of course, because you approved additional positions for mental health to support the elementary schools. So, what happened, what our approach was to have the guidance counselors with psychologists and social workers write the plan, so the curriculum is really written by the guidance counselors, and then certainly students could have access to a secondary counselor. The guidance plan is posted, and that's required on the district website. The advisory council is something new in regulation, and I say a little bit more about that. We've met once so far. It is required to meet twice per year, and there is an annual presentation to the board. This is not that presentation. This presentation is to talk about the new regulations, to make sure that you see the guidance plan, but the advisory council will also come for the same evening that we do an outcomes report, which is another requirement. So there are goals embedded into the plan, and we have to report on how we're doing. So, it's a very short presentation, but I'm happy to expand. Any questions you have?
Excuse me, just one question. The advisory council and the document that you provided states that a school board member is also, can be on the council?
Yes, we talked about you bringing this up to see if it was interesting.
I wanted to bring that up in case anybody, any board member would like to be on that. Twice a year doesn't sound like a whole lot.
And I'll tell you what the next meeting or the next piece of the agenda. We did have a presentation by a group called Bright in Massachusetts, who does some programming for students at risk, seemed to really fit in with something that we might be looking at exploring, and they did a presentation, and we are arranging visits in October to that site in Massachusetts. So, members of that committee really want to go check this program out. So, that's one of the things that we'll be doing this year. So I'll just say that. Doesn't mean you have to go if you're on the council, but I'll just mention that.
I have a couple of questions about the plan. I was looking at it, and I noticed that, can I ask specifics about, is this a good time to do that?
Sure, I have it in front of me. If I can answer, I'll get back to you.
I noticed that the Haveland program objectives versus the FDR program objectives, the middle school counsel, I guess the counseling staff, guidance counseling staff, they go to meet the staff night and parent-teacher conferences in their regard to participate in that. And I was wondering why that's not part of the plan for the FDR counselors, you know, for the meet-the-staff night and for the, and for the, the parent-teacher conference nights, you know, to have them visible on those nights and available. Why is there a difference there?
It's not that they aren't, it's that they have very different programs and different responsibilities at the middle school and high school, and each part of that plan was really written by the people in those buildings. So there may be some pieces, like I know for a fact that some of those things, those high school counselors are there, but that wasn't, that wasn't the focus of what their goals were or what they saw as the most important parts of their job. So that might be something to look at in the future, like looking at that consistency, and that's sort of what we've been doing since we did curriculum writing, where, you know, the groups came together and put their pieces together, and then it was my job along with other editors to make sure that it flowed together. And we also were really not interested in having every single thing they do every day in, and having a 100-page plan. So we wanted to get to, you know, what's required. And the focus at the middle school is, you know, a really different job.
So, with our last year's student board member and his input, was that taken into consideration for the high school?
So what specifically? As it relates to the guidance plan?
About the guidance, in general, just the availability of the guidance.
Well, it's actually addressed in regulation and the plan because now it's required that there's more face-to-face meetings with the guidance counselors, that guidance counselors are coming into classrooms and delivering lesson plans, and all of that is now part of regulation. So we've had to really look at the guidance counselor's schedule and day, and some creative solutions, like will ninth grade English during this quarter, you know, will this be a good time for them to come in and deliver that? So a lot of that is naturally a part of the work.
And I think another thing he brought up was everything from a guidance is typically college-focused versus career-focused, right? So, you know, and I know it does mention that up there, that it's college/career, so hopefully there's a little more proportionate guidance for those college-bound and those non-college-bound.
Yeah. And for some time, we've had, more than any other district in the county, you know, sent the most students to CTI at VOCs and really are committed to career-ready as well.
So is anybody interested in being on the advisory committee?
I'll do it.
Excellent. Okay. Great.
I'm interested. I just don't know if I can commit yet.
Okay. Well, Doug, thank you. And so as soon as I hear back from the people at Bright, that's when we'll schedule our first meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vila.
My pleasure.
And next up is the tax levy calculation rates from Linda.
Thanks, Viva.
Good evening. So the reason why I'm here to talk about the tax rates tonight is tonight's the night that we're asking the board to approve the rates and to issue the warrants to the tax collectors. I have a lot of information in the presentation, but I don't plan on spending a lot of time on each slide. I actually put this information on our website, so our taxpayers have access to it, too. The most important thing, I think, to talk about when we discuss the tax rates and the calculation is to talk about the three factors that go into that calculation. That's the tax levy, the assessed values, and the equalization rate. The only factor that the school district has control over is the tax levy. And that's the taxes that are included in the budget that are adopted by the board in April, and then the voters approve it when they vote in May. The assessed values are set by the towns. They're supposed to be based on market value, but when the state determines that they're not based on market value, they'll set an equalization rate that's either below or above So, here we have the actual calculation for the, or, I'm sorry, we're just showing the tax levy here. I'm comparing last year to this year. We, on the first line, we can see what the board approved in the budget for the tax levy, but we have to take off what is called omitted taxes. The omitted taxes are taxes that are excluded from a tax roll in one year, but we usually get the payments back in the next year from the county. So, that's all right. So in 2019-20, the county's going to be paying us $42,108 for omitted taxes from last year, so we have to take that off the levy. Otherwise, we'd be double-dipping, we'd be getting that money twice. And also because we're working in the constraints of the tax cap now, if we left that $42,000 in the tax levy, we would actually be over our maximum allowable amount. So we will be getting the full 61,000, or 61,900,000. It's just 42,000 will come directly from the county and the rest from the taxpayers. All right, so here we have the calculation. I won't go through the whole thing unless someone would like to, but basically, we calculate the tax rates for each town based on that town's share of the tax levy, and the share of the tax levy is adjusted based on the equalization rate that the state assigns. So you can see here, there are two towns that have an equalization rate that's below 100. It's the town of Hyde Park and the town of Rhinebeck. The state is basically saying that those towns have their assessments at below market value. So the town of Hyde Park is, according to New York State, assessed at 55% of the actual fair market value, and the town of Rhinebeck is assessed at 87%. So because of that, we have to assign more of the levy to those towns, which gives them a tax rate that's higher than the other three towns.
The 55% was, it 55 when the voters voted?
No, the tax, yeah, the equalization rates don't come out until August. So...
So last year's rate was?
Last year's rate was 57%. And when, when equalization rates go down, the taxes for that town tend to go up, but the taxes in other towns tend to go down.
Right.
Had Rhinebeck historically been at one?
This is the second year that it's been below 100. The town of Hyde Park last had an assessment in 1994. I looked at some history today. The last time they were assessed at 100% was in 2002, and the town of Rhinebeck was assessed at 100% in 2011, or, I'm sorry, was assessed in 2017, and last had an assessment This slide just compares the assessed values from each year, from 2019-20 and 2018-19. So you can see that the assessed values are going up. That actually is good for the tax rates because as assessments go up, the tax rates actually go down. If our assessments and our equalization rates all stay the same, the tax rate increase for every town would be the exact amount that was increased in the budget, which you may remember was 2.9%. percent. But because the assessments went up, our tax rates don't match that increase in the tax levy unless the equalization rates are different. So here, I'm just comparing the tax rates between last year and this year and also showing the equalization rate. So because the town of Hyde Park and the town of Rhinebeck have an assess, or an equalization rate that's less than 100, the other three towns will have a tax rate decrease. And the town of Hyde Park and the town of Rhinebeck will be experiencing increases in their tax rates for 1920. I think I just said that last year, Hyde Park's equalization rate was 57 percent and Rhinebeck's was 92 percent last year. This slide just shows the tax levy for each town compared to last year. You can see at the bottom, those numbers are the percentage of the tax levy change in the budget. So even though our budget is increasing by 2.9 percent for taxes, that's not the effect for the tax rate for each town. Here we actually see the actual tax rates and the tax rate changes. So all the three towns that are, have an equalization rate of 100 percent, so Clinton, Pleasant Valley, and Poughkeepsie, in the last four years, they've only had, there was only one year where they experienced a tax rate increase, and that was in 1718. The tax rate increases for Hyde Park and Rhinebeck unfortunately are much higher than the other towns. And like I already said, that's because of their equalization rate. And here, I'm, this slide, I just wanted to show the tax rate change to the equalization rate. You can actually, it's pretty obvious when you look at this to see why the tax rate changes or where they are. You can see from 1617 to 1718, the tax, the equalization rate for Hyde Park decreased. So the, or increased, so the tax rate actually was lower than the other towns, the tax rate increase. But once the tax, the equalization rate started to decrease again, Hyde Park's taxes started to go up again.
Do you know, when did Clinton, Pleasant Valley, and Poughkeepsie do their last assessment?
2019.
Oh, they did?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep. There's a new information on the state's website. They have all kinds of information. It's the New York State Office of Real Property Tax Service. They have a lot of information for taxpayers. And they have some new information on there about equalization rates. And they actually added a line that says, "To avoid drastic changes in tax rates, they recommend that towns, municipalities have their assessments as often as possible."
So I know that we've had this conversation often because the town of Hyde Park is resistant to doing reassessment because of the cost associated with doing the assessment.
Yeah, I think it's very costly, yeah.
Any information available as to what it's costing, you know, in some matrix, you know, as a percentage of the assessed value or the number of properties or anything? Maybe it might be interesting to try to get some of that information and see if their argument holds as much weight as it's always been.
Yeah, I can ask around for that info.
You know, if there's something, because we always run into this, we're going to, this is going to be discussion.
Yeah. I think one of the reasons why Hyde Park is looking at such a high cost is it's been so long since they did their assessment that they'd actually had to have people going and visiting properties and looking at them, whereas I believe the other towns might not do that every year. I did have a conversation once with the assessor from the town of Poughkeepsie. She gave me some information. I'd rather talk to her before I share it because I don't want to say anything that's not true. But it seemed like it was much easier for them because they updated every year.
So that would be important, too, to find out what the real scope of the assessment was. Yeah?
I did check. Last year, Mike suggested that I talk to the state about how they come up with the equalization rates. They actually shared all of their documentation with me from 2018. They look at every sale. I thought they might look at a sample, but they look at every sale in the, each town and then calculate the average, the difference between the assessed values and what the, what the properties were sold for. And that's how they determine the equalization rate. So because of that, I would think that every year we'll see changes in the equalization rates unless the town is assessed at 100 percent. So we do collect taxes online. We've been doing this for quite a few years now. For 2019, we're actually using a new tax software. So we can now collect from credit cards, too. In the past, it was only for banking information. There are fees to, for the taxpayer to use the online system, whether it's banking or credit cards. There are no fees for the district. When the taxpayers would log into our website, the fees will be the first thing that they see. So they'll understand and they'll know how much it'll cost them if they do choose to pay that way. Other taxpayers that don't want to pay online will still be able to look at their information online, however. All the information is public and it's, it's available for everyone to look at. The towns of Hyde Park and the towns of Poughkeepsie, they collect taxes for us, for our taxpayers. The town of Poughkeepsie has an online tax payment system. Hyde Park doesn't, but both towns allow their taxpayers to view their information online. And our tax collection dates will be September 9th through the, through October 8th. That's the penalty-free period. We do collect taxes after that through November 1st, but starting on October 9th, there's a 2 percent penalty. And like I said, the town of, the towns of Hyde Park and Poughkeepsie collect taxes for us, for the taxpayers that live in their towns. We collect for Clinton, Pleasant Valley, and Rhinebeck. So I don't have any other information, but if there are more questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I had a question on page seven.
Your numbers don't match my numbers.
Oh.
Is it?
That one.
Okay.
How come the percent increase is not the same across the towns?
That's because the assessed values are different every year, too. So the assessments increase, they've been increasing every year. They could, they could potentially decrease, but I don't think we've experienced that here yet. So the assessed value for every town changes every year, but not by the same amount.
Okay. That could be what, new businesses coming in, new houses?
Yep. Yep. Or sometimes they're, when there is a reassessment, there actually might be a change in the assessed values, too.
So renovation, anything, any improvement, real estate improvement would trigger a reassessment.
Yep. And when we, when we do the budget, we know how much we need to collect in taxes. We're not going to collect more than that or less than that. So whatever that amount is, it gets distributed between all the towns. So that first sheet that was, it's a little small on here, but this is from the spreadsheet that I use to calculate the tax rates. We have to consider not just our levy, which is at the, in the top-left corner, but also the assessed values for each town and the equalization rates to come up with the tax rate. It's actually that share of tax levy in the second-to-last column, column eight, that really causes things to change. All right. Is there anything else?
Thank you, Linda.
Sure. Great job, Linda. Thank you.
Thank you.
So at this time, can I have a motion to enter into public participation?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. At this time, does anyone like to talk to the board? Please go to the microphone. Seeing none, public participation is now closed. Onto board discussion. First up on the board discussion is the district-wide safety plan. I asked Aviva to talk. We're not ready, she's not ready yet to present the plan, but...
Right. So, yeah, this is sort of in-between a presentation and just an adoption. So some of you may have seen in the news that there was a big safety audit in New York State of school districts. We were not audited, but they didn't fare very well and some things came out of it. There, most of them, we are already doing ourselves. But one thing that we have not been doing, because we're not aware, is that the district-wide safety or school emergency plan had to be adopted every year. It had to be presented initially. Ours was in 2000. So with the SAVE Act, we actually, you know, Bob Bloom remembered and went all the way back and we found that it had been presented to the board. But that this is now an annual event. There is a new regulation that we're waiting for before a presentation, which is that there has to be a memorandum of understanding with whatever agency you have your school resource officers with. And that has to be a part of this plan. So ours is already, the one that we already have does meet the standard. It talks about the roles and responsibilities of your SROs versus your school administrators. So ours is actually, you know, compliant. The issue is that there's a new requirement to have stakeholder input. So part of that is, this plan is now here. It will be available for 30 days, you know, for, for a public comment period. And in the meantime, I'm going to get stakeholder impact input, both from the district-wide SAVE group. It'll be posted for parents to give input. And then there's a few other groups that we need to actually send the plan out and the MOU and make sure that people are comfortable with it or have a chance to give input. And so then we will have, October 12th, I'm hoping, at that board meeting, we'll be able to, you know, have a revised plan ready for adoption. But otherwise, there are not major changes in the district-wide plan. It's just that we're presenting it now.
Okay. Now onto the, our favorite discussions of the year. This will be our district and board goals. I don't, I'm going to go reading through all of these, but I would like for us to pick two for each meeting areas. And we come back ready to write these goals for each area. So at the next meeting, I think we, if we can attack academics and community, and we target those two. So if you could, please review those for the next meeting and we'll hit those two. And then we'll pick two others for the next meeting. Okay, on to subcommittee reports.
Oh, 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 oh.
Seven, I'm sorry.
So the special ed committee...
Excuse me, Jeff. I'm just looking over these board goals a little bit. Can we, can we try to hit more than two per meeting? Is that possible? So we can barrel through them? Do you think that's possible? Or is it just because academics is so, is so heavy?
Academic was very heavy, so that's why I did pick two.
Okay.
Then we can talk about the next one to hit three.
That sounds...
Or if we go really quick and we don't have any changes, we can hit more. But I think we picked the first two.
Okay.
Any other comments on it? Okay, on to subcommittee reports. The special ed committee did meet over the summer. That was just for training for the board, which we really appreciate Heather helping us. We have lost Dan on that committee and he was a person who knew the ins and outs of all of it. So the rest of us, Carl and I had to do a lot of learning. So we do really appreciate Heather spending the time to do that with us this summer. Any other board reports? Or committee reports, excuse me. Okay, going on. Let's move to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Some of.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Motion carries. Onto the new business. Can I have a motion for 11.1, special education placements?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.2, appointment of hearing officer?
Some of.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.3, fund, balance, and reserve plan?
Some of.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.4, reduce the 2018-29 tax sin, tax reserve? We'll leave it at that.
Some of.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I could never say that word either, so...
I was told you're supposed to pretend you're Sean Connery.
Sean Connery.
That'll help.
I just said tax cert. It's easier.
So, okay. Can I have a motion for 11.5, increase the employee benefit accrued liability reserve?
Some of.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.6, tax warrants and tax rates?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Reminder, we all need to sign the tax warrants when we're done.
I heard that.
So please don't leave until you have signed.
Okay.
Can I have a motion for 11.7, HPTA memorandum of agreement maker-stem club advisor?
Some of.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.8, HPCSUEA memorandum of agreement, 181 days?
Some of.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.9, CSEA memorandum of agreement, maintenance, mechanic, plumbing, and heating?
Some of.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, can I have a motion for 11.10, CSEA memorandum of agreement, using, using paid leave time to vote?
Some of.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, can I have a motion for 11.11, CSEA stipulation of agreement?
Some of.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Motion for 11.12, CSEA stipulation of agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.13, CSEA stipulation of agreement?
Some of.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.14, acknowledgement, knowledge receipt and acceptance of state audit?
Some of.
Second. Any discussion?
I assume at that, some point, we'll get a more discussion, plan, whatever.
The audit committee will be meeting to approve a plan or to help recommend a plan for the board to approve.
I mean, it all seems pretty, I mean, it makes sense from my standpoint.
Yeah, it does.
Nothing that you wouldn't want to be doing.
Yep. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, can I have a motion to go into second public participation?
Some of.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Anybody else would like to address the board? Seeing none, public participation is now closed. There's no other matters deemed necessary.
I did have one question, a follow-up maybe for Elliot. The flood at Haveland, was that all taken care of? It looked like from the pictures, a rusty pipe and all that? Was that?
Yeah, it was all clean.
Can you go to the microphone?
We cleaned it up the morning we found it. We rented AD humidifiers to dry out the spaces. There was two small areas that we had to re-wax, but it was actually, we were actually fortunate that we had sealed and waxed the floors because the water was never able to penetrate the vinyl tile or anything of that nature.
With the pipe itself, you had to rip apart a wall, it looked like in the picture?
Yeah. So it was a, it was a bathroom that had been redone and they had built a false wall in front of it, like a stud wall on top of a block wall with tile on it. And it was a, we call it a malleable fitting. It was a, it was like a metal fitting that will rust over time if it... a metal fitting that will rust over time if it's exposed to clean water, and, um, it was, um, so it was a copper nipple, and then it spun into it, and it eventually just rusted out and blew out. So, it actually took some trial and error to figure out where it was coming from, but when you heard the water rushing through the wall, it didn't take long, so, um, we were able to cut the wall open, figure that out, put the right kind of fitting on there, so it doesn't leak anymore, it's where a toilet used to be, um, but no longer is, it's actually in a closet in the bathroom, like a slap closet. So, it was all cleaned up, the floors were all dried up, same day, then we rented dehumidifiers and left them on for a week.
And do you think this is an isolated thing, or do you think that incorrect fitting is gonna pop more?
We hope it's an isolated incident, um...
You never know.
Well, I, I would say that, th- this is a situation of probably a tradesperson doing something that they didn't know what they should be doing. You know, it's, it's a matter of having qualified staff, and the importance...
You know, there are 100 of those in the building.
Yeah, exactly.
You know what, I, yeah, if you were to ask me, do you think it exists someplace else in the district? Absolutely.
Yeah, they're just, unfortunately...
Not likely, it's an isolated incident, it's just a matter of...
Taking time bombs, but we're not gonna go...
Become the, uh...
We're not gonna go tear the walls open to find them. Kind of, unfortunately, just have to wait for things like that to happen.
Yep.
But, we didn't see, there was actually another, another, when we tore the wall open, there was another same situation, and that did have a proper fitting, a brass fitting. So, it could have been like, you know, Friday afternoon, and just put it in there and never actually replaced it with the right thing. So, hopefully, hopefully, like we said, it was isolated, but I'm sure there's more conditions that we don't know about that...
And in all the construction that we're doing, in all the buildings, if there's an opportunity for a plumber to, if there is something exposed by the virtue of doing stuff, they'll check it to make sure, kind of be...
Oh, certainly, like, I mean, for example, uh, one, one thing that we're trying to do more of is exercise valves. Like, you know, if you don't open and close a gate valve once a year, or every six months, there's a likelihood, when you need to close it, it's probably not gonna close all the way. But, we're not gonna, in order to fix them, you gotta turn water off to the building, and it's a big ordeal, and they're expensive, 'cause they're typically on two, or three, or four-inch lines. Um, so, for example, North Park's had a lot of valves exercised this summer with turning the water on and off.
Okay, but thanks.
Thanks, Elliot. Okay, no other matters deemed necessary by the board. There's no need for a second executive session. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? We are now adjourned.